And we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Doro.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Waschiger.
Here.
Trustee Lutke.
Here.
Trustee Connor. President Farnerstill.
Here. If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Lutke.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if we have people, which I'm pretty sure we do, that would like to speak in public comments, this is for items that are not on the agenda, but anybody that wants to speak in public comments, now is the time. You can come towards the podium. I know some people wanted to talk about the road at Willow. If they did, now would be the time that you can come so you can tell the board what you're thinking and your thoughts on it. Anything that you want to tell the board. The floor is yours. Try to keep it to around three minutes if you could, or if no one does want to speak, they don't have to.
Hello.
You can, yeah. Just one person speak at a time and then just your name and address in case we don't know where you live.
Hello. My name is Christine Sather. I currently reside on 172 Willow Drive in Heartland.
And my name is Curtis Monson and I'm at 153 Willow Drive.
So we are here to basically speak on behalf of the, our community and our residents that we are not in favor of the road going through the subdivision in Chestnut Ridge. So we have a couple of reasons why. One, there's been, it's been that way since the development of the community. So another reason is children's safety and security. Right now, there are a lot of children that are moving into the subdivision and the numbers continue to increase and they are of younger ages. Right now, we also believe that it's pretty quiet and there's a lot of privacy to the neighborhood, so we'd like to keep it that way. And by opening a road, which obviously would increase the volume of traffic, could perhaps increase crime levels. Also, we want to keep the speed limits down. Right now, there are some people that do speed through there. So if you increase the volume of traffic, there's higher risk of people speeding. Also, we took a petition, so there's a level, a lot of people that have signed the petition that's currently going around the subdivision right now. I don't have that here in front of me. The woman that started is actually camping, so she's not able to be here tonight. So also, there was some concern around higher property values. You know, right now, we have a fair, fairly amount of decent tax prices, so we'd like to keep it that way. Also, the road is pretty narrow. If you get a lot of traffic or families that have parties or stuff over, the ability to maneuver around parked cars in the road is difficult. So again, with higher volume of traffic, it makes it even more congested and riskier for pedestrians. And then also, there was mention that the road may be used for emergency personnel. It would be easier for them to get out of the subdivision, seeing that there is only one entrance. However, there are some EMTs that do live in the neighborhood today and they are not in favor of the road either. They seem to be able to get to the emergency in a timely manner. And I also did look up the laws. There are currently no laws that exist for having more than one exit in a subdivision, so those are some of the reasons why we are here.
I just want to reiterate about the traffic. It is hard enough to get out of the neighborhood, especially when Arrowhead is releasing or when they're coming in. And I think that's going to become a shortcut for some of those and it could clog up traffic more by Chestnut End and north. So again, just the increased traffic is a, is a big concern. I'm at a corner and it seems that people do go quite fast around there. I've had a couple of close calls with, with my children or my child. And I also had someone actually damage their vehicle hitting a curb right in front of my house and the car was disabled right in front of my, my driveway. So I was actually stuck for a few hours for that. So traffic is a major concern.
So next week, just try to, and if I'm wrong on anything, Tim, please let me know. Next week is, once a month is the Plan Commission Meeting. One thing that we've tried to do is keep the road, and this is so the public knows, and you guys can share this in the neighborhood as well, we're trying to keep the road separate from the development. At least that's how the developer came forward. So in this situation, the developer is not pushing for or against the road, but simply saying that they want to put the development in. It's, it is people like myself that had said, hey, I think it'd be a really good idea to have it connected. Now, where that will go in my, in my mind and how that will end up after driving it and talking with some of the residents, that could be up for debate at this point. But it's, it's, it is being handled separately where what we're trying to do is, you know, we're nearing the point where it's almost like, no matter what, the development is going to happen, but we're nowhere near that with the road. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware, but that does not mean that you need to ever stop coming to the meetings or voicing your opinion, especially if it's something, you know, very important to you. I just want to say it so that, I do, I do want to make sure that people know it's not like all of a sudden, you know, in two weeks, it's going to be like, alright, it was voted on the roads going through. There is more time to it than that. And I will try to do a good job. I know other people have, well, but are getting it out on Facebook and, and doing things like that, especially with there already being, you know, really heightened concerns. So that way, we all are at least communicating and getting that out. So, but thank you for, for speaking and letting the board know what your thoughts are on the road going through.
Thanks for allowing us to speak.
I have a couple of questions. So you mentioned a petition that's being circulated. Is there an end date on the petition? And then we know what the next plans are for that?
I don't. I'll have to find out more. Like I said, she's on vacation right now, so I wasn't able to connect with her.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any, uh, public comments? Items for public comment, for items not on the agenda. Alright, so the first item we have is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes from May 26, 2020.
I'll move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the May 26 meeting, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. The next item we have is a motion to approve the vouchers for payments. That is in the amount of $408,223.1.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of $408,223.1.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. Now we have quite a few different licenses and permits and things like that. The first item we have is consideration of actions related to licenses and permits. First being a consideration of an application for an operator's license recommended for denial as was listed in the packet. If that person is here and does want to speak, the podium is yours. Uh, yeah. Yep. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I should say, for Dustin Pfeiffer. Yes, I'm sorry. I'm looking at it, but you're not. So my apologies for not saying.
That's okay. I just turned down the agenda. I figured.
Right. Nope, understood. And it's not, yep.
Well, obviously, you know, something has gotten mixed up in, in the past that, you know, has now been brought to light and unfortunately, it, you know, prevents, prevents a good guy from, from having an operator's license. And, you know, he got one two years ago.
You said your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's my fault. I just didn't want to stop you.
Tom Lutke, President of the Heartland Athletic Advancement Association.
Thanks.
I'm, I'm here too often currently.
Sorry for interrupting.
That's okay. But, uh, yeah, so obviously, this, uh, the statute that was brought up or brought to light is the one that, for criminal offenders, that, um, a license permit related to alcohol may subject to subsections, all that be issued under the chapter to any person who has been habitual or been a law offender, has been convicted of a felony unless the person has been duly pardoned, right?
Correct.
So my, uh, I guess my goal here is to get, you know, I, I'm sure he's not the only one that's in this sticky wicket, if you want to call it that or whatever, but direction and support for, you know, a guy who's, you know, two years ago, we got, we went through all this, two years ago, to, to get Dusty, you know, his operator's license. And he's, you know, obviously proved that he's responsible. I mean, I trust him with everything at that park. You know, he can do everything that I can do. And, and, you know, I'm not an easy man to keep up with down there. But, so, uh, what I, I guess what we were looking for is what direction do we head to, to make this happen so that, you know, I, I realize it probably can't happen real soon, right?
Right.
But his, his current license is good till the end of the month.
End of June.
End, end of the month. He only works the, the one night semi alone on Tuesdays, but that's the, it's usually just three games unless we get rainouts. But I'm always available on Tuesdays, so I can be there, you know. And usually, we have like one or two other people, you know.
Yeah. To answer that question, with the operator's permit, it's different than just bartending. So with the operators, that's where you're the only person, someone has to always be on premises.
Right.
With an operator bartender's license.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean a person cannot bartend, if I'm wrong. Correct me?
Yeah.
Uncorrect? So you can still bartend.
Yeah.
But someone has to be on the premises with a.
With the license.
And it could be, there could be 50 people at the HOD.
Right.
That all get one. I'm just saying, if one person is there, but someone else is bartending, you know, there's just got to be one person with that operator's bartender's license on premises.
But that, you know, and that, that's what sometimes happens, you know, like, like I said, you know, he's trusted to run it all himself. So on, on Tuesdays or whatever, even other nights, if it's slow, we'll only have one person, you know, bartending. Sometimes there'll be someone else there doing food that doesn't have an operator's license. But, you know, but Dusty's the one that has the operator's license. And say, uh, you know, one of our other members that doesn't have one, is there helping with food or whatever, then, you know, he's the one that's responsible. But, yeah, so this is my, my goal here is to, you know, get, like I said, direction from you guys and support in getting him duly pardoned. So how do we go about, is there a process that anyone is familiar with? I presume this was brought to your, brought to light by your village attorney?
Well, no, the village attorney was, it was requested from the village attorney. It's not like they.
Right.
Just came in.
That's how, that's how we got.
The village attorney is here, Hector Delamora. If you'd like to speak on what the steps to pardon.
Sure.
Okay.
We were asked to render to the village. Maybe I should use the microphone.
Sure.
Because it's being broadcast, we were asked to render a written opinion to the village as to whether the issuance of a license or a permit under these circumstances was something within the authority of the village. And while we did not participate previously when the license had been issued before, at this time, we are advising the board that the statute that controls this situation is very straightforward. Now, by way of background, Chapter 125 is probably the most frequently changed and regulated statute in the state of Wisconsin because it affects the dispensing of alcoholic beverages. And the statute on its face, as the gentleman has read, is fairly straightforward. Criminal offenders, no license or permit related to alcohol beverages may be issued under this chapter to any person who has habitually been a law offender. That's not the situation here. And there's, this discussion is no reflection on anybody's character. We're just talking about the law itself. Or who, who has been convicted of a felony unless the person has been duly pardoned. Now, my anecdotal information is that the offense in question, which was a felony, occurred about 20 years ago. And there is a process, it's a statutory process whereby an application is submitted to the governor's office. And the governor has the inherent authority to grant a pardon. And the process, while I don't have the statutes here, is something that I can share with you. And the fact that there have not been any problems is something that I think can be mentioned. However, the reality is that the license that may have been issued may not be a modified legitimate license because it's beyond the authority of the village board. And in this particular situation, the organization can be an applicant on behalf of the individual citing that particular information. The concern that I have is not so much that the village will be prosecuted or sanctioned by the state of Wisconsin, although theoretically, they could initiate an injunction action against the village. My concern is looking down the road. While we have a very unique situation where obviously there have been no problems, you routinely have to pass judgment on the appropriateness of the issuance of a liquor-related license. And I am concerned down the road that somebody else convicted of a felony will come before you and will say, hey, you made an exception. I'm being denied equal protection. And then we find ourselves in some kind of a federal lawsuit, even though in the beginning, the legality of what you did could be questioned. So that's the basis for my recommendation that the board not proceed to issue a license because you're barred from doing that. But at the same time, I ask that the board authorize me to share information with the organization so that if they want to pursue the application, they can avail themselves of that information.
Thank you, Mr. Farnerstill.
So to reiterate what Hector's saying is that even if this, technically this board in this specific case, no, you're right, two years ago, even then, it was recommended for denial for my own self. I, I thought it was for different circumstances, or it was, I believe it was for different circumstances that it was recommended for denial. Everybody did the right thing because it comes down to opinion, you know, that at that point, it's a judgment call. I, I hate to use this word when my, I'm talking about myself, but I have to in this situation. My ignorance of exactly how the law works, I thought it was saying if you have a habitual offender or someone that's committed a felony, then, you know, that we have judgment and this, that, and the other. I was wrong on it. I didn't realize that we are actually now, because we know, based on the letter of the law, it would be, we'd be illegally almost giving the license.
Yeah. It was an oversight, obviously.
Right.
For these things to happen.
Right.
It wasn't, it wasn't, you know, anything I think that was.
But we can get the information so that at least with that.
That's what, you know, that's what we're, you know, so that we, moving forward, we can try and get, you know.
Yep.
Dusty duly pardoned.
Right.
And, and back on the, you know.
Right.
Back, able, able to get a.
I have to apologize because last, at the last meeting when it came up, it says that we have never approved anybody that was an accused felon. And I was wrong. I, this, at the meeting from, with our chief, this is the first time in 15 or whatever years that I was told that it was a felon, a felony, and that we couldn't give the license. I was wrong. I never was informed of that.
Me too. I was wrong.
Until the last meeting we had, when this situation came up. And at that time, the person that was presenting and wanted to have an exception, we said no because it's a felon. That's the law. And that's the first time I knew about that. But yet I approved it. So my ignorance approved that liquor license at the time.
Mine did also.
But it doesn't say that you can't work there. You just can't have the license. So I have to apologize to community because I broke the law because I didn't know, because I didn't hear the real law that says if you're a felon, you cannot have that license. And I was never told that until.
I don't think anything was intentionally done here.
Well, it doesn't matter. I made the mistake as an elected official, so I was wrong. So with this, I don't think we have any choice here. This is a felon. Last week, or two weeks ago, we denied a license because of the felony.
That's, that's, that's actually what caused us to find out about this.
And so because of that, I don't think there's any choice right now. Do you agree?
There's not. And I don't think that they're fighting for that. I think they're more so saying if there's any.
No.
And we really don't. We don't have the authority to supersede the state. So, and Mike, I was, it's not just you. I was wrong also. I didn't, I didn't realize.
We just wanted to get direction and I'm glad that, that Hector was here so that we know, you know, what steps to take moving forward to, you know.
Sure.
Rectify his, you know.
Yeah. And I'm, and I'm very sorry for my mistake as well, even because it's got to be a tough thing and all of a sudden it opens up and then you have the license and all of a sudden then it's, you don't. But it's.
But that doesn't say that he can't work there.
No, no, no. I know.
Oh, right, yeah. You just see someone with an operator's license there, yeah. We understand that. I mean, we understand, you know, the need to have an operator's, a person there with a valid operator's license. It's just that, you know, for, for the last, you know, two years, I, you know, I didn't have to be there or someone else didn't have to be there when Dusty was, you know, serving beer.
Right.
So now we won't, you know, I mean, you know, what we have to do, but.
Right.
That's, so I can, I can get your information so we can touch base and figure out how to.
Mr. Fifer, I have something. So I would agree with the board. So on behalf of the board, we apologize for that. But we do commend you for continuing to volunteer. What the HOD does is bring a lot of community spirit. And so we hope you continue to do that on behalf of our community. The HOD does operate quite a large program for the village. And without that program, men's and women's softball wouldn't be alive here. So we appreciate that and all the hard work that you do and that you've done the last couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We wouldn't do it if we didn't love our little village.
Thank you for understanding.
Thank you guys. Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys.
With that, I make the motion to deny.
I second.
Bartender's license.
It's been moved and seconded to deny that license based on the information we just heard. All in, all in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. The next we have, we have a one, I'm just leaving it off. No additional material, correct?
Correct.
The next we have alcohol license renewals. It's, that's a long list, correct? Oh, no, not too bad. Wait a minute.
We need to get to the.
Sorry, one moment. I'm on renewal bartenders, correct?
No, we need to do the class, the classes of.
Where the heck is?
Here, Jeff, just take.
Hold on. I'm, I'm trying to find this list here.
Just take my place up.
There's the list.
It's on this list.
I have bartenders recommended for denial, then it goes right into alcohol license renewals. Is that the next item?
It's in the back. Individuals are in the back. No, he needs the class.
You see what I'm seeing, right?
Right. Here's what we need to do here.
It's like document 31.
So it starts here. So you have the 12. So that's B I 1.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Are we going to do this as listed? Are we, is that?
That's fine.
It, it is open for someone to make a motion to do it as listed in the packet. If you want to go through each one individually, it is up to whoever makes that and seconds that motion. So at this time, we are doing the Class B Beer, Class B Liquor License Renewals.
I'll make a motion. We approve the people, the 12 applicants for this approval.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Class B Beer, Class B Liquor Licenses as listed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried.
I.
Then we have Reserve Class B Beer, Class B Liquor Licenses. This is for Bin 111 and Heartland Hospitality Group, which is Zesty. We're doing business as Zesty, I should say.
I make the motion. We approve the Reserve Class B Beer and Class B Liquor for the two listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Then we have Class A Liquor Licenses. This is for Jasmine's Flower LLC. It has the flower garden.
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have Class A Beer Licenses as listed.
Move the approved Class A Beer License as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Class A Beer Licenses. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have Class A Beer Licenses as listed.
Move the approved Class A Beer License as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Class A Beer Licenses. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. Then we have Class B Beer License.
I make the motion. We approve the Class B Beer License for the five listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Class B Beer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. The next item we have is Class C Wine for Board and Brush and Enters.
Just take my place up.
There's the list.
So I'm this list.
I have bartenders recommended for denial, and then it goes right into alcohol license renewals. Is that the next item?
It's in the back. The individuals are in the back. No, he needs the class.
You see what I'm seeing, right?
Right, here's what we need to do here.
It's like document 31.
So it starts here, so you have the 12. So that's B I 1.
Got it. Okay, thank you. All right, are we going to do this as listed? Are we, is that?
That's fine.
It is open for someone to make a motion to do it as listed in the packet. If you want to go through each one individually, it is up to whoever makes that and seconds that motion. So at this time, we are doing the Class B beer, Class B liquor license renewals.
I'll make a motion. We approve the people, the 12 applicants for this approval.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Class B beer, Class B liquor licenses as listed. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. Then we have reserved Class B beer, Class B liquor licenses. This is for Bin 111 and Heartland Hospitality Group, which is Zesty. We're doing business as Zesty, I should say.
I make the motion. We approve the reserve Class B beer and Class B liquor for the two listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Then we have Class A liquor licenses. This is for Jasmine's Flower LLC as the flower garden.
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have Class A beer licenses as listed.
Move the approved Class A beer license as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Class A beer licenses. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have the Class B beer licenses as listed.
Class A.
Sorry, Class A beer, Class A liquor.
I'll also move that we approve the five.
Sorry, everybody.
Applications.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those licensed Class A beer, Class A liquor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. Then we have Class B beer license.
I make the motion. We approve the Class B beer license for the five listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Class B beer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. The next item we have is Class C wine for Board and Brush and Enters.
I'll make the motion. We approve the Class C wine for Board and Brush and Enters.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those Class C wine licenses. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have consideration of motions to approve annual licenses expire in June 30th, 2020, not requiring a public hearing. These are for. It's gotta be on this list. What's all in the whole? Thank you. We have the amusement devices. Oh, do.
Sure, you can just do all the.
Oh, okay. So we could do amusement devices, bartenders operating licenses. Is that what you're talking about?
I would say just do the categories because.
But that's what I was saying. It's, yeah.
Because this is the one we need to remove here.
Yep, yep, yep. We'll go in line as they're listed. So we have the amusement devices.
I'll make the motion. We approve the amusement license.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amusement devices permit. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion carries. Now we have bartenders licenses. This is, there was, oh, no, it's, there was a last minute change. So if you're looking at the list, this is for Lisa Ingwell, Andrew Kruger, Sierra Zuge, not sure if that's pronounced right, Angelica Mastandria. It's just for those four.
I make the motion. We approve the license for the four named.
I will second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the licenses for Lisa, Andrew, Bradley, and Angelica. All in favor?
No, excuse me. It's for Lisa, Andrew, Sierra, and Angelica. You've mentioned Bradley.
Sorry. Lisa, Andrew, Sierra, Angelica. Good catch. Thank you very much.
Abstain.
Okay, both are gonna vote again and take it. It's for those four names listed. This is for Lisa Ingwell, Andrew Kruger, Sierra Zuge.
Ziggy.
Ziggy, Angelica Mastandria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried. Now we have cabaret license as listed.
I'll move that we approve the cabaret license with individuals listed above.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the cabaret licenses. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. We got licenses to sell cigarettes.
I make a motion to, for the presented businesses for the cigarette licensing.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those licenses. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
Now that I have just the rest, can I say the rest of the licenses as listed?
We just have weights.
Yeah, weights and measures.
Yeah, weights and measures.
See, that's why it's, yeah, because it started here in the middle. Sorry, everybody. Weights and measures licenses as listed on our list.
I make a motion to approve the weights and measures as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the weights and measures licenses. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Point of clarification, under that one for Sun Laundry, is there supposed to be a call in there in laundry?
No.
Okay.
Type O.
Thank you.
Man, I'm gonna do these lists so much. We already got a motion to second, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Again, I apologize, everybody. It's a long list.
So now we do public hearing on the two new ones?
Okay, so now we have, we're gonna take these one at a time or can we do them both at once? Is that okay? Is that permissible?
D.
No, one at a time? On case, yeah, okay. We'll do them one at a time.
They're hearings.
What's that?
Because they're public hearings.
Right.
Do you want a little explanation why we're doing two public hearings for one license?
Yeah. Oh, no, because it's two different people.
But there's only one license.
There's one license.
This gets interesting. Would you like a short definition of how we arrived at this moment?
I would because that doesn't, because one of these should be a renewal.
This, this gets very interesting. So we are about to have two public hearings for our one active license that we have. So as we all are aware, the Heartland Inn is no more, and so there is a license available for this board to decide who gets that. We are, we have two businesses in town basically applying for that license. Zesties is, is Zesties present?
Nope.
It's not Zesties.
I am, Tabby's. I am so sorry. I've got my restaurants mixed up. Is Tabby's present?
I don't think.
Is Hartbrook Cafe present?
Nope.
I don't think so, but I gotta, I'm gonna have a question.
Neither one, neither one are present, which makes this even more interesting. So we have one license for the board to decide. The board can take three actions tonight. They can award it to one of these businesses. They can award it to another one of these businesses, or they can award it to neither business. Because that one is open, two businesses applied for it. Tabby's does have our reserve currently, so it's our extra license, which is the $10,000 license. They are looking to reorganize the business and get the normal, if you will, or standard license from the village so that they don't have to worry about being the reserve. The other applicant is also looking for the same thing to get our last regular license. So we kind of have two businesses vying for the last license in town.
Okay, but I, for a point of clarification, we can't give one company two licenses. And even though this doesn't start till the 30th, until someone comes and turns that license in, we cannot renew a license. Or we can't, you know what I mean?
So Tabby's is on the list of renewals in the event that she does not get the regular. But if she gets the regular, then the renewal is no longer an issue for Tabby's. So she's currently on the list of renewals. She would be renewed. Either way, she will have either that renewed reserve or she would get the regular if that's what the court.
Why? I have to ask, the $10,000's already been paid.
It has.
And they don't get the money back. So why would someone do that?
Darlene?
She, she has changed the name of the business. She's changed the agent, but she's looking to change the LLC and the members of that LLC would change. And at that point, it becomes a new business, basically. And then another $10,000 fee would be required of her. And she, of course, doesn't want to do that at this point in time.
Gotcha.
So.
But currently, that LLC is not done and set up yet.
Correct, correct. She's looking to make that change.
Okay. You understand the confusion, though.
I'm sorry. The other option is the board does not have to take action tonight. They can talk, they can have the public hearings, get any input, give this two weeks, and then make, make a decision in two weeks.
That's a tough pull.
That's my representation.
We can do, I'll allow for the board to make any motion they want to. I, I don't usually try to do this, but I strongly encourage that we don't because not only might there be some people that are upset, but typically when you come, no matter what the reason is, but typically when you, having two companies. I understand what you're saying, though. They want to safeguard. No one did anything wrong. It's just that this is a tough one. I can't vote to give someone a license that already has a license. They already got a $10,000 license.
Could I just ask just a real basic question on these two? Tabby's sells wine, basically, correct? And.
No, she sells.
Other things, I know.
Finish it. She's not done with her question yet.
Hartbrook Cafe, now, I haven't been in there for a while, but I, I was, last time I was there, they had breakfast and lunch and they closed at 3:00.
Mm-hmm.
And they don't do that anymore, is that correct? That they want to be open at night now?
I don't, do you have a large stipulation that says they have to be open at night?
No, I'm just asking. Are they changing things?
I have no idea.
That was my question. Does anybody know?
Since the new owner has taken over, since it was sold, yes, they've changed their hours and they do want to have.
That's what I, that's what I was wondering.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Have both organ, both companies been contacted? Their companies up in a public hearing right now? Okay.
Sure, they have to file for a license.
They wouldn't be here.
Well, I think I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this until our next meeting and redo the public hearing to have them come forward so we can gather more information.
I'll second.
Can we do that if it's on the agenda with the, I know we can table it. I'm just asking, or do we have to have two public hearings since it is on the agenda?
That's why we do this the first meeting in June, so we have the second meeting in June.
Okay, okay.
And this is unusual. This is a, this is a.
This is really unusual.
And, and I truly mean this, very important task of the village board to decide where these licenses go. These are, these are important licenses. They should not be taken lightly, and so postponing it is fine. I was under the impression they were both gonna be attending tonight so you could kind of get both business ideas and concepts and make a decision, but we'll make sure they're in attendance at the next board meeting so you guys can make that decision.
Support of clarification. So trustee Doros' motion, is that standing for D and E on the agenda where we're combining? Or is it for, is she making a motion for item D on the agenda? And then does, do we need to have another motion on the table for item E since they are separated, yet we're talking about them as one?
I think it'd be appropriate to fold it into, oh, have two, okay, separate, each end, one has to be handled individually. In the future, just for clarification, would we technically have to have two separate public hearings or are we okay having one public hearing? Good, okay. So we'll handle each license tabling differently, so down to the floors, yours for the motion. Did you get the clarification? You're good.
Yes, sir.
I, to make the motion for D and E or?
Well, you can table.
Do one of the.
Okay, so making the motion to table item D for the public hearing for Hartbrook Cafe.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to table this, the public hearing and any decision that would be for the license for Hartbrook Cafe. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
Okay, I'll make a motion and to table Class B beer, Class B liquor license for Tabby's Lake Country.
I'll second.
Aye to me.
It's been moved and seconded to table the public hearing and any decision on, for Tabby's getting a new liquor license. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, now we have, I gotta get back to the agenda here. It's all these licenses. I apologize. It's a lot of them. There's a ton of them. It's all renewals.
We're not done yet.
That's what I thought. Hold on, it's just me. It's not you guys. It's me. It's my fault.
Item F is not necessary because it's under G.
Okay, we have items related to the Chamber of Commerce. Oh, that one, I would've caught that. I knew that one. That was on the agenda properly. Items related to the Chamber of Commerce Annual Street Dance Saturday, July 19th, 2020. We have a temporary Class B beer wine permit. We have a public dance license and a temporary operator bartender license for.
It's with street dance change event because we approved it for the street, and this is for the.
Yeah, no, I know that.
Okay, okay.
But we have to change their temporary license also.
Item F was actually in error that could have been removed because it is actually handled under G now.
So the location for that license doesn't matter, or does it?
It does, but they're all under G.
Yeah, that's, and I was just putting them all together, but.
I'll make a motion. We approve the Chamber's annual street dance for the temporary Class B license, the public dance license, and the temporary operators bartender license.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those licenses. Just so everybody knows, at the last meeting, it was approved, the Chamber's gonna, for social distancing purposes, or at least that's my understanding, it's gonna move it to the park and be able to use the band shell and that kind of thing. It has been cleared. I think it's very important that we note this. I did talk to Pat Enter, who is totally fine and typically closes the beer garden anyways when the street dance is going on, so it does not affect him because he pays a contract on the beer garden. Anyways, there's no conflict there, and he is completely fine with that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Those are carried.
That's why I gave it to you.
Okay, now we have discussion, consideration of financial support for the Chamber of Commerce. I believe they are, is, are they here to speak? If you'd like, yep.
Good evening. I'm Matt Galkey. I'm the board chair of the Heartland Chamber. We are here tonight, sent a letter from the board of directors to Tim last week asking for some consideration for some financial assistance during the pandemic. Summary of the letter was basically stating, due to the pandemic, half of our revenue basically is eliminated. So we get, well, 45% of our revenue from membership, 55% from events. Street dance for now is going on. Golf, we've had to push back. Kudos, we've had to push back. That's our awards dinner. Community Fest, we've had to push back. We've had some travel that's also added in the past that we have, of course, not have been able to do. So we've basically just been living off reserves and the membership dues from the beginning of the year. So we are a nonprofit. We did have some reserves. We can get more details on that if that's requested. Couple of things we've already done. We have applied for a small EIDL loan that we were able to get $2,000 for. Also looking at SBA financing. The issue there is SBA is making Lynn Minter, our executive director, it appears to be personally liable. So she would have to sign as the guarantor. We, as a board, are not comfortable with Lynn signing up for that. We're also looking into a potential block grant that we've heard the Waukesha County We're also looking into a potential block grant that we've heard the Waukesha County Business Alliance be eligible for, so we're trying to kind of cover all of our paths. And then the idea we had was to, you know, come to the Village, you know, we're an important part of the community, and just ask if there's something that could be considered moving forward, a grant. And again, it's not, nothing that we need today, we're not insolvent by any means, but we're just looking ahead to say, could there maybe be some money set aside and available for us in the future to use as needed? So that's what we're here asking for and looking for some feedback.
Did we ask Lynn about that? The money? Well, I mean, is that who you would ask? I'm just.
I, I do, I'm just opening up the floor to anybody that has.
Well, it just scares me that, you know, taxpayer money to support a business organization. It's like, there's a number of organizations in our community. I have a past president of the Chamber too. I remember we had the street dance, it was really great, we made about $14,000, we lived like pigs. And it was great, you know, and it's, it's very good event. The only concern is there's a lot of organizations in our community that could probably use some help. I get a lot of businesses can use some help. And I'm not sure how we take taxpayer dollars and give out loans or grants. I just, I just don't know that, I, I'm, I, it's a business, I'm, I'm asking the government to do that. You know, and they, they've been helpful, but I, we're not.
Our concern there is, you know, going through different avenues to try to, you know, find these funds as a 501(c)(6) organization, we are not eligible for a lot of these, so we've looked into a, you know, a few of those options and it's just where we're, you know, striking out, where we don't have that opportunity. And then that SBA one that, you know, we were looking at, Lynn can go through and enter it all in and it says Chamber, it says Chamber, but then it has her name at the bottom. I work at a bank, so I said, you know, well, something we could look at, you know, but then if we look at your credit, probably gonna see that trade line on there that is gonna show in your own personal name. So we don't want to do that, you know, with her. If it was in the, the Chamber name, you know, I'm sure we could, we could have, that makes sense.
The Board, I remember being president, we, the FIFA police wanted to charge the Chamber for all the police work. And the Chamber battled that, battled that, battled that and said, no, the police, we're doing that, it's part of our community. So we're looking at, you know, seven to eight thousand dollars with overtime and police work that the police have to budget for, that the Village is doing. I don't believe that the Village ever charged us for the license, for the fees. So, you know, putting those numbers together, I was looking like, already looks like the Chamber is receiving probably about nine thousand dollars from us as far as that we're not charging them. Well, that is not being charged and, you know, it's, gosh, I'd like to go with more, but I just don't, I mean, I'd be happy to give Jeff's salary to them, but, you know, I, I just don't know what, I just don't know what vehicles we have.
I'd like to make a correction, the Chamber does pay for permits, that is not given to the Chamber. We pay the permits to rent either the park, we just paid those permits for the street dance and to pay the street, the police, that's been something that's been under for a long time, but that's, I mean, the Chamber has always paid their fees other than the Police Department. And speaking with the Police Department, I know that the Chamber is not the only event that they are, go out and patrol for at no cost to oversee, so it's not just one event, one organization. So we, I just think we need to keep that in mind, that there's other organizations that utilize that.
Does Ryan, do you have any comments on money laying in a closet? Okay.
No, Anne, there's no money laying in the closet.
Have you been in his office? I'm thinking.
Anybody else have?
Well, I just didn't know where we come from. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, that's, was actually my question, just for, just for clarification, being that it's my first year. So has the Village ever traditionally invested in block grants to this magnitude to support organizations like this that we know of? Has that, have there been loans lifted in the past?
I don't know how many organizations have come and asked for $25,000 in a grant or loan, I don't know.
But we don't have anything.
The chimney is the only one I know.
We don't have anything like any mechanism or vehicle, we've never had that in the past, right? Like, no actual grants?
Not that I know, the chimney is the only one that I know of, that, the Chimney Swift Project.
Right, okay.
They did it in tandem by working with, and that can't happen, there are, I did do some reading, I mean, there's some communities that do that, but it's typically, it's much more veered towards tourism. And what the community actually does is takes those portion of those tourism dollars and they give it, you know, because they're, they're working in tandem. So that's some of those things that they do. But here in Heartland, not, not that I know of, you guys would know better than I, I, I don't recall. For myself, I, I guess, and I don't, and hopefully I have it all straight, my understanding, the Chamber did come in, talked to the Administrator, Administrator said, I don't know what we can really do. And then the Chamber came back again and said, okay, we, we really need it. And then they said, you know, send in a letter, and the Chamber said, okay, we're gonna come in front of the Board. In reading in the letter, I mean, I don't know, I can't speak for anything that's going on with the bank, but I feel a little bit, you know, there's a loan going on with the bank and I don't think that the Village definitely shouldn't be the co-signer, so to speak, where the bank would give the loan to the Chamber because then they have the Village kind of as a backdrop.
It seems like someone has to be, some sort of individual guarantor.
And that's what it is, they want somebody to guarantee the money because obviously, and it's happening all over the country, there's a lot of chambers that are just, you know, they're, some of them are just kind of shut down and call it hibernating and then there's a, some of them that literally are like, you know what, let's just fold it up, forget it. But, you know, so in doing some of that reading, but when it does come down to when people really look at what they are, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, like you said, it's a 501(c)(6), which means it's a, it all, for all intents and purposes, it's a professional organization. And each person on that Board has a fiduciary, on the Chamber Board, has a fiduciary duty to their members. One hundred percent, if you're going to be on that Board, that's kind of, they have a fiduciary duty to their members. But so even if we gave this money from taxpayers, it would be, in my opinion, it would be giving it to an organization that while doing a lot of fun stuff and things like that for the community, I think that this Board would have to spend a lot of time, this is in my opinion, looking at how can they spend their dollars the best? If we do give that money to an organization, maybe the Village can do more by having every twenty, every dollar of $25,000 being spent. If it does go to the Chamber, it's not like there's gonna be, it's not like 16,000 of this is going to spread out into the community. It's gonna cover the cost for rent and payroll at the Chamber and maybe be a little bit extra. But to take taxpayer dollars and do that, for me, is just a very, very difficult, a very difficult thing. My guess is that it's somewhere around, well, I don't know what it is, let's say it's twenty, twenty or thirty cents on the dollar that makes it out to something else, the rest of it is used for payroll, electricity, all that kind of stuff, or producing another event that then, you know, also makes money for the Chamber. But it's just a difficult thing, so if we didn't even put out $25,000, there's only gonna be seven or eight that might go into something that is producing it for all of the taxpayers. Not to mention we have a lot of people that'll come in and ask for it, it'd just be a really difficult thing, you know. And I don't know, you know, I'm not gonna tell the Chamber what to do, but maybe looking at some avenues of hibernation, obviously keeping fingers crossed so that it doesn't rain in July is a big one. But also, you know, I don't, I, I guess I just wanted, that's a tough thing for me. I don't know what steps the Chamber has taken, but my understanding is that the Chamber hasn't taken steps to, you know, slash those costs and cut that stuff out yet.
I wonder where you got that from?
Where I got what from?
That they haven't done any steps to slash or cut the costs.
I said, I said it's my understanding, I didn't, but if you have the floor, it's yours, if you need it.
I just was, wanted a clarification of.
I have a question, just. Are you done?
I am.
Okay. Is the Chamber 501(c)(6) six, is that correct? Is it a 501(c)(1) one?
C six.
Just one six, okay. Now, are the, just out of curiosity, the Lions, Kiwanas, are they also the same type of organization? I mean, if, if they come to, if we set precedence, if they come to us and ask us for money, would we have to also entertain their motion or their request? I just, I, I'm, I'm just wondering about setting precedents for.
The Chamber is in front of you, I don't know, I didn't, I don't know what they are.
Well, I'm, I'm just.
If it's any other.
You, you understand what I'm asking?
The difference with this 501(c)(6) and a 501(c)(3), a 501(c)(3) looks to not make profit but takes care of an organization that's like baseball clubs, things like that, that's a 501(c)(3). A 501(c)(6), it changes because the fiduciary responsibility of the Board members is to, the, of the Board of Directors is to their members. It is a professional organization and that is what they're, who they're responsible to.
Yeah, so for point of clarity, for the residents, in the Federal Cares Act that was administered in March, nonprofits were included in that to receive some sort of support as they continued their operations. However, under that Federal Cares Act, 501(c)(6)'s were not. So that is why the Chamber is here, or chambers across the state are advocating for some sort of block, community block fund grants of some sort, as they were not included. So hence your request, which is noted.
Correct. And we have, yes, we have made, I don't know, if you want to get into details, many cost-cutting type moves. We've also consulted with a gentleman who's in that field to give us kind of some ideas there. So we have taken, you know, a number of steps, you know, just what you were mentioning before, to try to do that so far.
Anybody else have any, any questions? No? Thank you for coming to speak. Obviously, if someone did want to make a motion on the Board, did we have that list of repossession?
Discussion.
Hold on.
Yes, discussion and consideration.
Okay, discussing.
Yeah, and I think that's what we're looking for, is just your consideration. And if there's follow-up that you need that, you know, our accountant can get or, you know, more details on, on funds, we'd be happy to provide that as well.
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Okay.
Just a quick question. So the street dance, one of the largest fundraisers the Heartland Chamber has, been moved, been approved, it'll still continue as a fundraiser, correct?
Yes.
So is the 25,000 that it's requested at this time for missing funds that has happened in the last four months to continue operation, or would that fundraiser help?
It will help.
Okay.
But yeah, we've really, we haven't had anything coming in, you know, minus the membership dues since the beginning of the year. So normally by this time, we would've had our awards dinner, we would've had the golf outing, we would have Community Fest, we would've had a number of those items. So everything getting pushed back, including some travel as well that we've started to partake with. So that's what's pushed us where, again, we're, we're just kind of using what we have, but it's, we see there, where, you know, there could be concerns later on.
And then, do you happen to know your annual retention rate for membership?
I don't offhand, no, I mean, we.
I just know it was a large part, you had mentioned a large part of your budget, so.
Yeah, we do, we do a pretty good job of keeping people on board, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I just had one question too.
Oh, go ahead.
Tapped off of trustee Lukey. Is based on past street dances, the profitability that came out of it, how does that play into backing? I mean, I know it's hypothesis, but the last two or three years, what profits were made, how does that back pay where you're, you feel that you're struggling right now or moving forward?
I would say it would be a, a nice shot in the arm if we could have an eighty and sunny degree day. Like, for example, last year it was raining up until mid-afternoon and there was, you know, some thoughts and some current concerns that it might have to be canceled. And so there was less people there, but it still was okay, you know, but, you know, there's, yeah, many expenses that go into it, the band, of course, is, you know.
Right, but I mean, the profitability that you take, took away last year and the year before, or averaged over the last five years, that profitable dollar amount, how does that play into where you're sitting right now?
Like, do we have those, I mean, I can look back at previous budgets or revenues that came in and get an idea what those were, I don't have those numbers.
I just want to, how that plays, plays.
Like, what is your net for that funding?
Right, if you're in a deficit right now, but hey, we're gonna make fifteen, twenty thousand dollars coming here. We take that profit, it'll pay off the 10,000 debt here and we'll still be 10,000 ahead. I guess I'm looking at, once that event is done.
Yeah, there's no debt. It would just be kind of trying to, you know, build up the reserves for concern if things with the pandemic and COVID don't get better.
So you're really behind too because you haven't done the sponsorships for the band or the other groups of sponsors that you usually have? Are you getting any response at all from the members?
We're starting.
How are you doing with that, do you have the band paid for?
We're, we're starting to get out asking for the sponsorships now, we kind of waited on it and waited on it until we knew that we were gonna move forward on it, yeah, that's the problem with the waiting game.
That's tough.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
What's wrong?
Point of clarification, can we go back and actually, we didn't actually vote on the renewals for the operating bartender's license, we only voted on the new operating bartender's license.
Oh.
The one that were in there, sorry, just for point of clarification.
If the Board will allow, why don't we take that up now before we move to the next item? My apologies, it's my fault, I'm the one that's supposed to get it right. It's a long list. Uh, go ahead.
Go ahead. Oh, where are we?
All right, I'll move to approve the operator's license.
Renewals.
Renewals. Renewals for the individual bartenders or operators. As stated in the packet.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to, to approve the renewals that we missed during that time, so this is a little out of sync, to, to renew the bartender's licenses.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Abstain.
That motion is carried, we got two extensions?
Yep.
Got it? Okay, we have a discussion and reapproval of a revised PUD agreement for upgrading of the Sendex store located at 600 Heartbrook Drive and substitution of same for PUD agreement previously approved by the Village Board on October 28th, 2019. Reflect cost sharing by the developer of improvements required for appropriate water drainage and landscape changes. They here?
We have Village Attorney Hector Delamore, President.
Sir.
As you may recall, way back last year, the Sendex property and the owners came before you and asked for approval of a planned unit development agreement. And that agreement was necessitated by the fact that they essentially were trying to enlarge the capacity of the store, the Sendex store per se. And this was the most efficient way of accommodating that request to allow the store to expand. Much of the space that they were contemplating was going to be used for storage of inventory and to facilitate the efficiencies of, of a store. The matter came before you and you approved it and normally the document would have been recorded. However, in the aftermath of that, it was appreciated that there were some water drainage issues and some landscaping issues which needed to be addressed in order to make that expansion, an efficient expansion. And at the same time, make it one that the developer would be responsible to a certain financial extent for. So in the aftermath of that, discussions ensued involving the representatives of the owner, Sendex, and the Village engineer. And a resolution was reached with regards to substantial cost sharing by Sendex to the amount of ninety, ninety percent of the additional costs to be incurred along with an agreement of replacement landscaping that would be necessitated by this installation. Those changes are reflected in the draft that you have received. And Sendex, and I join with them, I guess, in requesting that you approve the revised document, which would be substituted in place of the previous document that you approved. There are one or two little typos that need to be corrected, but there are no proposed substantive changes that are being contemplated. And I apologize for the typos, I'm basically working from home and typing was not a course that I excelled in. So if you have any particular questions, I'm available and the representative from Sendex.
What's the payback?
Ryan Thomas is here.
What's the payback on that? What, what's the length of time that, that we're gonna pay, that's gonna be paid back on the PUD?
Not a TIF, this is just a PUD for the properties, they could have a larger property footprint. Not like a TIF where we're gonna get money back.
Okay, so it's just us throwing money in there?
No, 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 so, yeah, so the, the gist of it was originally, what they wanted to do with their stormwater, we were gonna do as part of our project. The costs got complicated, they were gonna take on their part of the costs and we were gonna do our Sunny Slope project. Some things have transformed where our costs became better and so they're, they're going to add in their stormwater project as part of our Sunny Slope, which we bid and did and are doing. And they're gonna then pay us back for it. So originally, they were gonna do the work and we were gonna pay them for our part. Now, we're gonna do the work and they're gonna pay us for their part. So it was just, that was the difference of the PUD was who was gonna pay for the, you know, who was gonna be like the general and, and get paid back by the other party. So, thank you. Is that accurate?
Yeah, Ryan Thomas from Mass Maher Architects, representing Sendex. It was basically a matter of your contractors that were working on the street project were better that, cost-wise than what Sendex could get for contracting. So they are paying a check directly to the Village and that work will be done in conjunction with the project that you're already working on. So it was just, it was, when this project was approved, some final numbers came in and there's We Energies work back there and there is stormwater work to be done that was all approved through the original agreement. Those costs came in a little bit more expensive, so we came back to the Village, had a meeting and we asked you guys to price our plan through your contractors. That number came in better, so then we all agreed that we would pay the Village to do the same work, basically. And so the document said, Sendex will do it and dedicate it to the city. The document now needs to say, Sendex will pay the city to do it. And nothing else really changed besides that. Except for Sendex writes a check tomorrow.
I didn't want it to be that the check was in December, but the work is happening in August. Because, you know, we've had some problems before, not, not with Sendex, Sendex is wonderful, but we've had problems where we think something's gonna happen, we're like, oh yeah, it'll just get taken care of and all of a sudden, five years later, it's like, where is that? So, just wanted to make sure.
Just for clarification for the public, our village attorney, or excuse me, Village Engineer from Rupert Milkie has been updated on the plan? Just for clarification for the public, our village, um, attorney, or excuse me, village engineer from Rooker Milky has been updated on the plan.
He's been involved in it. He wrote it.
Thank you.
Wrote a lot of it.
To the president's comment, uh, at the si- at the time of the signing of the agreement, Sendix will be presenting a check. Is that correct?
I'd like a suggestion that we approve the PUD agreement with the upgrading of Sendix store.
I'll second.
Moved, been moved and seconded to approve that, uh, PUD, that Sendix and the agreement along with it. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you and good night.
Good night, Hector. Good to see you. Okay, we have a consideration of a motion to approve payment for the twenty twenty crack ceiling program to Wolverine Seal Coating LLC in the amount of fifty five oh four. Mr. Gushowski.
Hello. Uh, yes, this is a request for final payment for the twenty twenty crack ceiling to Wolverine Seal Coating LLC. They've completed the job to the satisfaction of myself and Steve Pease, the inspector for, uh, Rooker and Milky. It is less than the contracted amount. They were able to finish the crack ceiling and we had some material left. They chose not to do any additional work. So they, uh, we pay for actual pounds of material put down on the street. That's why it's roughly five thousand dollars less.
I make the motion to approve, uh, the payment to Wolverine Seal Coating LLC in the amount of fifty thousand, five hundred and four dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay Wolverine Seal Coating LLC. A discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. And now we have a discussion and consideration of curbside pickup signs in the downtown.
The village engineers did not draw this maps that are presented before you. These are handcrafted by the village, by the village administrator. I, I tried to lay out based on what we've done, working with the bid for each business that wants one. We've tried to, uh, put those located where there are existing posts that these could be bolted to. So we've, we've tried to work as best we can. But this is the current, um, listing and rough location of, of where all those signs are. So I tried to label each business and then put a little, uh, checkered parking spot that will be the designated, uh, spots for the curbside pickup. And then just leave it, uh, based on the businesses. Again, one of my recommendations is we kind of revisit this in ninety to a hundred and twenty days. See if this is still what is desirable by the village. Um, and then also with the flexibility, if one or, one or more of these businesses, you know, the COVID situation changes and they say, hey, I'd rather not have that in front of my business, we can pull it if they don't want it. So.
Um, I have, just looking at Hometown Pharmacy and Tabby's as an example, not to pick on them. It looks like we've got, for instance, three parking spots there and two of them are going to be designated as curbside pickup, which is what, fifteen minutes? Ten minutes? Is that right?
They're, they're gonna be based on time.
You stay in your car and you just let the motor run and you wait for them to bring your food out. That's it.
Like something like that, is there any way we could, is it bad to make it into one instead? Because sometimes it, or is it really necessary to have two there?
Well, there's four parking spots. There's two in front of my store and two in front of Tabby's.
Okay, so then there'd be one for just general for you and one for her for general, really, right?
Based on this, yes.
And is that efficient? I mean, is that what, instead of you and her sharing one? I mean, I don't know.
I mean, from my, my perspective with, with elderly people, handicapped, it's advantageous to be right in front of the store, to be honest with you.
Okay, okay. That's what I want.
Right.
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
And there are times that before Tabby's establishment has opened up, there, the spots are being taken from just people parking, so.
Okay, okay. I just, I was just curious because it just seems like, you know, two that close together with some people having issues not being able to find parking downtown. I just, I just want, that's what I wanted to ask.
Yeah, most.
There's a bunch of spaces, just not right at the front door.
I understand that.
Right. And the answer would, by the time her, her store opens up, a lot of my, um, and I could have three plus curbsides going on at one time, but it's mostly during the day, first thing in the morning, early afternoon. By the time she opens up, I'm not gonna say I won't have one or two, but the bulk of it is earlier in the day.
Okay.
Keep in mind, these are for four to eight or whatever it is, four to nine or whatever it is. So like Rick's already got fifteen minutes on his. But staff is gonna work with him.
Hometown Pharmacy is really the only one that's not a four to eight type of.
Right, right. So when someone's using Rick's, it's not gonna affect Tabby's that much. It's kind of my point.
Six. That's why I can never get here.
You gotta allow them. They happen to be right next to each other.
Well, yeah, I mean, you look at the map.
You can't tell Tabby no and you can't tell Rick no. So it's like, okay, so we have two really close. So you can really pack in that curbside pickup.
I understand. I just, um.
And Palmer's could even run food over to there because that's right across the street. Or Rick could use the one in front of Palmer's. It'll be fine.
That's fine. That's fine. I was just, I'm just.
We're gonna, let's, I think the ninety day rule is good though. I think that's good.
Yeah, reevaluate. So that's about how good the map is.
Just asking. So it's just, um, the four on East Capitol Drive, right? Because the, are these two? No. I'm sorry. I don't have my glasses.
If you look at the list, it's just the right in front of those businesses.
Yeah, I mean, there's different, there's, enters is on.
Well, which one is for Zesty's though?
The one in front of Zesty's.
There's two. That's what we're, that's what we're asking for. That's what we're asking.
On the map.
Yeah, Zesty's just the one, the closest to Zesty's.
Got it. Okay.
Yes, there's.
And it's fifteen minutes or no, are they eight to five?
They are, uh, four, four to eight, uh, and they just say pickup.
Four to nine is what's on here.
Sorry, four to nine. And the sign is reserve parking, curbside pickup. So, and it'll say from four to nine. So during the day you can park and, you know, like at noon, you could park there. At those, not at, not at the one that's designated.
Rick, you can park at seven o'clock.
Yeah.
At night.
Six oh three.
And again, this, this, you know, kind of on the fly, just trying to work with the bid and the, and the businesses down there to uh, offer some solutions because the curbside pickup is still, is still a relevant piece of the business now, so.
That's good. Nice signs.
So all the signs are gonna be the same then?
All of them will look the same, uh, with the exception of the time for, um, Hometown Pharmacy will have a different timeout because his business is during the day.
But they will look like this, Tim? Except they'll have the hours on there?
Yes, the bid, that's the sign that the bid all unanimously voted to, to stay consistent, which was not an easy vote. But not our problem. That's what they voted.
Okay. So altogether, it's the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine signs?
Yes, no, I, I do want to throw something in. If someone does go to the DPW or someone goes to the administrator, we can't tell another business no. So if someone comes to them and says, I want one, you know, now I do think that's why we're doing this as a ninety day. I think there's more that we're gonna have. We on the board are gonna have input and I think Mr. Rhodey is, because the whole, I, if all of a sudden everybody wants one of these in front of their store, then there's no point in having one because you have an entire village that now is fifteen minute parking from four to nine and you've just choked off all the bars and restaurants that have been bringing people downtown for a long time. But the idea was that some of the people at restaurants thought COVID's gonna be around for a little while. People wanting to social distance is gonna be around for a little while. Instead of having temporary signs that are getting faded by the sun and stuff like that all over, why not make some more permanent? So if all of a sudden, you know what I mean? If all of a sudden we had fifty of these things, then it'd be obviously not a good idea. Just wouldn't.
I'll make a motion to approve the nine signs as read in the packet for curbside pickup.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the signs with their locations. Discussion?
I have a question for the police chief. So if you, if somebody's parking where they're not supposed to be, they pull into whatever and they're sitting there for two hours, what is the procedure or what is the, what do you do?
Sure. So under state statute, three forty-six, fifty-three, sub six, which is in our ordinance, is an adopted ordinance that we can enforce. It states upon any portion of a highway where and at the time when parking is prohibited, limited, or restricted by official traffic signs. So since this is a traffic sign that's officially limiting, it's saying curbside pickup, our take would be we show up, you're in the car, you're doing curbside pickup, we show up, you're not in the car, you're not doing curbside pickup, you would get a parking ticket.
So they would get a parking ticket if they're not in there?
Yeah, it'd be one of our twenty-five dollar parking tickets. So this one would actually be a lot less labor intensive than the two hour parking because that one, we gotta chalk and then we gotta come back and we gotta check and then they move up one spot and then we gotta do it all over again. This one, you're either in the car or you're not. Very simple for us. And we do have statutory authority.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You have to vote, I think, don't we? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Staying.
That motion is carried. Oh yeah, good call. But if you abstained, you shouldn't have called. It's okay.
I was asked a question.
Uh, we have our next item, item nine. Consideration of a motion to approve the contractor's application, I'm sorry, uh, eight. Sorry, I was trying to jump the gun there. You were skipping eight to eleven. Discussion and consideration of a request for the installation of signage at one forty-five North Avenue Double Park.
As you may recall, this is a follow up to our previous meeting where we tabled for more information. And I got that information for you and detailed it in my memo. And I also have Lori here, if you would have any questions for her about the temporary, uh, or the short term fifteen minute parking from eight to five in front of her business. Does it say anything?
Yeah, I, we had a discussion that that really doesn't help immensely. Yeah. What we do is weddings and events and, um, we deliver flowers all day long because we have an e-commerce site. And so we're in and out constantly and it's difficult when we have apartments that are upstairs. They have apartment parking, but they have guests and whatnot, so people park right in front. And we don't have any parking in any way to load anything. And then when we go out on events, we, um, have a crew that goes out at midnight, picks all the glass structures up and everything and has to come back and we find people parked there all night. And we can't get into, so we end up parking kind of squirrely and certainly not where we should be. So we can unload. So it becomes a difficulty. We're just looking at one parking place designated so we can come in and out and load and then people can come do, um, we have no contact pickup in our lobby, so people stop and pick up flowers and whatnot. But then so we can do our loading and unloading and run our business.
And then hours of eight to five are fine?
No, 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 no. Eight to five doesn't work. That's what, that's the whole point of it. Yeah, we can start at eight in the morning and we may go set up an event at eight in the morning, which means we load out and do all of that. And then we come back and need to be able to get back into that spot at midnight or one in the morning to unload and put all that stuff away. And then we run, we do our delivery of flowers between eight, eight o'clock and about four thirty or so, that we do that kind of thing. So it's a, it's a very long in and out kind of business.
I got a question.
Okay.
Yeah.
So your business is inside of.
Yes. No, the apartments are upstairs.
Right, that's what I mean. You're, okay, but it's the, it's the same building.
Correct.
Okay. Have you spoken with the landlord? I would look, I guess I'd look at that as, if I'm a tenant, whether I live there, I have a business there and you said in the back, there's dedicated parking places, why isn't there one allotted for you since you're a paying tenant as well? And in my, my building, there's a pharmacy, I have two apartments up there, there's two dedicated places in my parking lot for those tenants.
The, the entrance into the back goes up to the apartments. You can't get down to where we are. It's, there's. Yeah, so the building, essentially the businesses are in the basement. It's a walkout toward the street level. If you go up the hill and into the back, you're at their lower level, which is actually the first floor. So they don't have access to the businesses. Business doesn't have access going up that way. So, and the other, the other issue, we do have a parking place for myself and or one of the girls that works for me that's right by the dumpsters up the hill, but it is up a steep hill that we can't carry large containers of glass and candles and all kinds of stuff. It's, that's a very difficult situation.
Someone else had a question?
In front of your building, there is actually a yellow curb, so you technically do have a, a section that could be used for loading and unloading right in front of, or right behind where that parking spot is that you're using now.
The angled one kind of thing? We do kind of go in there, but there are times to load, it may take us forty-five minutes. Because it's a big deal to load, we'll load and move other cars or whatever. It's a lot to get these, these big events loaded. That also is the entrance that goes up in and out. And there are times we've had to move and if we've got the tail end open, it gets, it's a, it's a mess trying to get in and out for tenants to get in and out. We're not, we're trying not to be in their way, that kind of thing.
So what, what is it you're asking? What is your solution?
Well, we just need a designated, whether it, we call it a, a pickup and or loading zone, one parking place that is right in front. And the, the landlord knows that we do this. They try and help. But people who don't, aren't around there, they just park there and take off.
Designated twenty-four, seven?
Pretty much. Yeah.
Do you realize that if we would agree to do that, that that wouldn't be specifically for, again, just like all these other signs we're talking about, that other businesses that are in the area that may need to load or unload or pick up something would be able to use that spot?
I'm the only business. The, the only other business in the building, there's a massage therapist, they don't ever pick up and do whatever. And then the rest is the corporate office for the landlord. They all park down the street and then municipal and whatnot. So I'm the only business in that vicinity between Lombards.
You have a business.
Across the street is, um, Senor Tomas for the most part. And they have their area, plus they have their parking in the back, which goes into their restaurant. And then we have the, um, offices that are across over there and they park that whole line and they also have a back entrance there. So I'm the only one that has this much space. Yeah.
No, that's not entirely true because that's, you're talking public, you're talking public roadway. So everybody in the whole village has it.
I understand.
It's not that you're, you chose to be in a place that didn't have a lot of public access and is highly usable because of Senor Tomas and the apartments, but it's not, it's, I, but you're saying you just don't have, you don't have a place because your parking lots in back, so it's tough to get to it. So you want to utilize the front parking space.
We don't have access from the back.
Right.
In the building.
But I think what trustee Dora was getting to is that even if it says fifteen minute parking, if every time when you come, someone's parking there, there's nothing that can be done.
And it has happened, uh, because we have a temporary sign there. It has helped some, but it has happened. And in that kind of situation, we've had to park elsewhere and make, make it do. But as the mo- for the most part, the bigger problem is when someone's visiting, an apartment person or whatever, and they park there all night or they park there starting at one in the afternoon and they don't move it until.
And you might leave from six o'clock at night and be gone until midnight.
Correct.
So you're there at six o'clock, you're there for fifteen minutes, you gotta get whatever you gotta get for the car, then you're out of there, then you come back, you get there at midnight and you're just unloading, but when it hits fifteen minutes, you're out of there because it's only fifteen minute parking.
Well, no, because it might take us a half hour or forty-five minutes to unload. I'm not, I hadn't designated that it needed to be fifteen minutes in any way, just that it was loading zone, not necessarily a timed.
Right.
Loading or a pickup or I don't have any.
And I understand what you're saying. Do you know how hard it is?
Oh, I know.
Because there's a, there's a, because there's parking for the building in back, do you know how difficult it would be to justify it, that people in the village, that we have a loading zone all night?
But that's not my parking. I don't have any access to that. That is apartments only. It's not for businesses.
No, I, oh, okay. So, so you don't have parking there, but behind Senor Tomas or on the road, there are spaces there, I'm saying, but to take. It is a very difficult thing because you have, I mean, everybody in this entire village, businesses and the people that live here, they own that street right there. It's very difficult to say. It's very difficult to say, we're gonna have a loading zone because someone's gonna use it for one hour throughout the night, but we have it all the time. It's difficult with this one, not because, it'd be much easier if you knew exactly what times you were using it.
Okay.
But it just makes it very difficult on us where we can't, you know, I mean, we do try to work, like you saw with the, we're trying to work with the businesses, but it's very hard to make that loading zone in the village of Heartland for the entire time.
So, for example?
And I can't speak for the board, I'm asking for myself.
For example, today, we had our first run at seven-thirty this morning, we were in and out five times, then I came and went, and the other driver came and went, and that kind of a thing. Then they have been back there yet this evening to pick up, to go deliver for a small event that's going on. If we had an event tonight, we would start at eleven o'clock with the first run and then back at midnight. I mean, it's not like it's just an hour a day.
No, no, I get that.
Okay.
I understand that. I guess part of me believes, nothing changed with the street since you put the business in there. And I'm all for the businesses, but maybe the place that you got wasn't the best.
No, I've been there for five years, this has been going on a long time. It's just that as things grow and as things change, and then the apartment people have changed, and things just, you know, yes, it's technically a two-hour parking area.
Right.
Does that happen? No. Are we gonna start calling and turning in people? No, that's not goodwill with the other businesses.
I would suggest you do that, but that's just me.
I understand that, but then that irritates the other businesses when they've got someone that's eating lunch longer than two hours. I'm not gonna do that to the business owners.
All right.
We're just looking for help with one parking place.
Right. Somebody wanna make, well, no, I'm, I'm done with my question, sorry. Anybody else that has a question?
No, I guess I was looking at, you know, as a compromise, I mean, we did the curbsides and fully agree. Loading zone, I fully agree, but I guess I look at a, a loading zone as during normal business hours. So if you're open eight, eight to five, seven to five, whatever it is, um, I just, I just can't conceive a, a loading zone that, I guess I'd say like last night at one o'clock was somebody?
No, I mean, last night was, was what, a Sunday night?
Exactly, well, that's my point. I mean, you can't have a loading zone dedicated twenty-four-seven if it's never, it's not, it's gonna be used randomly, but during business hours, I can see, yes, if, most, the bulk of your business is between eight and five of doing things.
But it's not, so my business is a little longer because?
So I can come and buy flowers at eleven o'clock at night?
Well, no, but you could, I mean, if you wanted to.
You're bringing stuff back after outside.
Now, we have to, especially for time sake, because it's a long meeting, we're gonna have to have one person talk, then the other person talk, then they're done, so get everything that you're gonna say in, just be, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
Just because, otherwise, we could talk about these signs.
I understand what you're saying.
We've already had one meeting talking about it.
Granted, I would, I can compromise and say even if we're doing seven or eight o'clock, because most everything that we're doing for loading out is before seven or eight o'clock at night. The midnight one o'clock thing, I guess we'll have to figure that one out. But events are about sixty, seventy percent of our business, so we are doing this constantly.
Okay. I'm done.
Mike, for clarification, how many parking spots are on that side near her?
Uh, I believe there's four or five between the driveways, hers, and then maybe three others.
Okay.
Maybe four, I didn't count specifically.
Mike, are you also requesting this change?
Yes.
The fifteen-minute, which one are?
Mike, is this, is this what we're talking about right here on North Avenue across from Senor Tomas, where these three cars are?
Correct.
It's this, it's this.
You wanna show that to them so they know what you're talking about? I, I don't?
They're gonna bring it up.
He's gonna bring it up. Oh, he's bringing it up, never mind, thank you, Ryan.
Page ninety-four. Page ninety-four.
Keep going down?
Nope, that's it.
Three cars to the right. Three cars to the right.
Three cars to the right.
So right behind that car is yellow, so that's, that's an actual loading zone, and I?
It doesn't say that, it says no parking.
Right, but if you're loading and unloading there, you can use that space. You just can't leave your car there.
And we do.
Um, and there are businesses across the street too. Another thing I want to be clear of is that that specifically is not for your business, there are other businesses in that area that do utilize, have to load things and unload things.
Understand that, I just know from working with the other businesses, they're not where I am, they don't come over that far when they're loading, they get over by their doors. So, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Mike, can we bring it back to the beginning? Can you, um, I, I think I'm just getting confused as we're kinda going down discussion. Can you just clarify the request of which specific signage you have requested? I'm sorry.
Right now, it's two-hour parking for that spot.
Mm-hmm.
She's requesting a fifteen-minute parking.
No.
No, I'm requesting a loading.
A loading, okay, the original sign said loading zone.
The fifteen minutes is what you brought me temporarily.
Right, right. Um, and she's requi, I had put down eight to five, she's requesting something longer.
She's requesting twenty-four hours a day.
Okay.
But I would compromise with shorter, I'm okay with that.
Well, we don't know when you're gonna be there, that's tough.
It would be safe to say till eight o'clock.
I understand. You would like, and I, there's nothing wrong with it, there's nothing wrong with asking, you would like it to be, you would like it to be a designated place for your business because the place that you rent from doesn't give you parking, but nothing in the neighborhood has changed. But you want a designated spot just for you, and if you and every other business did that, it, it wouldn't work.
Except for they kind of are if they're having curbside pickup, that's kind of a designated.
Oh, no, that's for any business can do it there.
I understand, but they're in front of the, where my businesses are, we are very separated, it's not usually?
If you wanted a curbside pickup, you can get a curbside pickup.
I know. But thank you.
I know what you're saying, I do know, I know it's frustrating with the parking, it sounds like, I'd be talking to the landlord if I were you to say, hey, I gotta get something going on here.
But there isn't any place to put me, there isn't any place to do it because in the back or on this, there's no access into the building. And then we'd be carrying things down flights of stairs.
Gotcha. Well, and that's just me, so, I mean, someone may make a motion, but does, has everybody figured out what we're talking about and everything now?
I think, I, just a point of clarification, I think where some of us are becoming confused is that the actual memo here?
Yep.
Says the sign on the utility pole will be changed to a two-hour parking, eight AM to five PM.
To the left.
To the left, it with, with a left arrow and a fifteen-minute parking from eight AM to five PM with a right arrow.
And the picture says fifteen minutes, so that is what the memo says.
My initial understanding is?
And that's where I was confused, because now we're talking, we're going back to loading zone.
She's asking for a longer time period than the memo calls for.
And I, I, I think that was my question, Mike, when I said, are you advising, are you asking for whatever she's asking for, or are you asking for what was proposed to the board?
I'm asking for what we can compromise with her.
Gotcha, okay.
Uh, this was a, a minimum to satisfy her need to have the ability to have picking, picking up and dropping off.
I think just, just to be clear, um, obviously, I am not the police chief, he's, he's much more talented than I. Consistency is really important. We have a lot of signs in the downtown, eight to five. When you start to have some signs that say certain times and other signs that say different times, it's gonna be complicated. I think fifteen-minute parking, uh, gives some flexibility, uh, but doesn't then limit the space to, to just one business, so I, I certainly, if, if, uh, if this original request kinda talked about this idea and, and we, we have the signage, I think it's worth giving a shot doing the fifteen-minute parking from eight to five. I know that doesn't satisfy everything that the business owner is looking for, however, the business owner's in a tough spot, they basically rented a spot, are operating a business that involves a lot of deliveries without owning any parking, parking spots in the village. So they are relying on public parking to operate the business. So I think this is a, a fair compromise, and again, to trustee Doro's point, we want to be very clear that this is not your parking spot, this is a fifteen-minute parking spot that anybody with a licensed vehicle can park in for fifteen minutes.
It's better than what I have now.
All right. I'll make a motion?
If that's what you want, it's up to you, what you wanna do?
If anybody else has a discussion? All right, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the installation of the signage at one forty-five North Avenue as pictured in here, that it would be, um, fifteen-minute parking, eight AM to five PM, uh, arrow pointing to the right.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to put a fifteen-minute parking sign at the place that we've been discussing on North Ave. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Hopefully, that'll lead to help a little bit.
Thank you.
Uh, next item that we have is a con, consideration of a motion to approve contractor application for payment number three for the Sunny Slope Drive Utility Improvements in the amount of two oh one, one six zero point zero eight.
Can I make a motion, we approve the payment for this work?
I'll second it.
Discussion. Go ahead.
I'm here to, on behalf of Musson, Musson's, uh, completed over half the sewer main project and the water main project relay on Sunny Slope, so, uh, they are seeking payment of two hundred one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and eight cents.
We got a motion, so now discussion for anybody on the board? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next thing we have on the agenda is a consideration of a cemetery plot creating section G in the village cemetery.
No, you missed one.
I put two lines online, sorry, sorry. Consideration of a mo, I'm really off tonight, I feel bad, I'm sorry to everyone. Consideration of a motion to award the East Industrial Drive and Progress Drive by a retention contract to Sober or Sopper Grading and Excavating LLC in the amount of three hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty bucks.
So this project will consist of, uh, it's consisting of stormwater, reditching, uh, we're putting some, uh, fixtures, stormwater fixtures in, on Progress Avenue. Um, so we budgeted four hundred and sixty-five thousand. Surprisingly, this, uh, contractor came in at three hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, so way under budget, and we did receive a grant from the DNR for a hundred and fifty thousand of that, so. So we are recommending that to award Sober, um, Grading and Excavating LLC.
Sober.
So, C O, S O P E R, yep. Um, for the Industrial Drive and Progress Drive Storm Sewer Project.
Is that gonna be on both sides of East?
It's, uh, it'll be on the south side of Industrial, and it'll be on the east side of Progress.
Okay.
So what's it?
Is that, what's that, gonna be like a ditch?
Yes, so we're, we're gonna redo ditching, um, and then they're also gonna put some storm fixtures in there so we can hard-pipe it so the water doesn't sit in the ditches too long, so we can hard-pipe it, and it'll come down by us by the marsh.
So that'll be underneath the driveways that are currently there?
That is correct.
So we could tear them out and put new driveways in?
Uh.
No, we'll borrow them.
C- certain number of them, we'll have to have a new driveway approach.
Because there's some.
Not all, not all the businesses.
Dave, is that gonna make the problem that we had at Carcraft, Mander, remember, the water was going right over the driveway at times?
Right.
Is that gonna make that worse if the water's flowing real easy down there?
No, so, so this is east of where Mander is. So this is just taking, uh, the water from Industrial, and it's running it down Progress and into the marsh.
I like that, okay.
Uh, the ditching over by Mander or Carcraft, that, that we have issues with because the culvert is a little bit back pitched.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the, uh, award of the East Industrial Progress Drive to Sober Grading and Excavating.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Faulkner.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Now, we have a consideration of a cemetery plaque creating section G in the village cemetery, it's on the map that was in the packet. Mr. Grushewski?
Um, as you may be aware, several years ago, we bought property to the west of section F off of Hill Street, and all this time, it's basically just been vacant. We had budgeted some money to have it platted, um, and we'll register that so that we can eventually start selling graves in that section if they're needed. And this is just the final step in that process.
Is this next to, uh, is this right next to the St. Charles portion?
No, this would be on the west side of section F. St. Charles is on the east side of section F.
Oh, okay.
Do you get through this from like?
Hill Street.
Church? Oh, you do, you don't go up the hill?
Hill Street.
Oh.
Up the hill on Hill Street.
Okay, because either there is a drive behind our, you know, our church that you go up?
Oh, that's, yeah.
That's, that's where I thought this was, I was confused, okay.
No, no, this is, is actually, um, adjacent to where we talked about putting the columbarium.
Right, okay.
This would be to the north and slightly east of the columbarium.
Okay.
Um, and it's laid out in the same grid as the existing section F.
Any other questions for Mr. Grushewski? We're gonna entertain a motion, or we can move on to the next item?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, section G in the village cemetery.
I second. It's been moved and seconded to, uh, create section G in the village cemetery, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. I'm sorry, did I even ask, all opposed? All opposed, that motion carries. I don't remember if I even did, sorry, I just. Next item that we have on the agenda is discussion and consideration of a motion to approve entering into an agreement for services with Tactical Athlete Health and Performance Institute.
Good evening, I'm Rick Kelcher, I'm with R and R Insurance, we're the insurance agents for the village, we handle your property and casualty insurance, including your workers' compensation insurance. And that insurance is provided by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Insurance Company. So in essence, you're owners of a mutual insurance company with four hundred and some other villages and cities in the state of Wisconsin. The league has entered into an agreement with Tactical Athlete, I'll introduce Tim in a minute, Tactical Athlete's rebounding, is, is rebranded, they're now gonna be known as Rebound. And what their service is, it's providing concierge medicine and navigation to your employees. And what it's gonna do is it's gonna reduce work comp costs, reduce overtime costs. So probably the easiest thing for me to do is give you a real quick testimonial because I got to use, unfortunately, or fortunately, I got to use the service last year. So last year, on, at the end of July, I tore my tendon that connects my elbow and my bicep. So what I ended up doing is I ended up calling Tactical Athlete, took a picture of it, within thirty minutes, they had got back to me saying, you need to see, you need to see an upper extremity surgeon. Okay? Within a half hour, they had that surgeon's office calling me, saying, can we set up an appointment? Within twenty-four hours, I had an appointment, a week later, I had surgery, ten weeks later, ten weeks later, I was fully healed and going back to what I was doing in, in what I like to do. Now, mine wasn't a work comp injury, but think if that happens to one of your injured employees, whether it's an officer, a firefighter, someone that works in public works, we're getting them back to work that, that much faster. So with that, I'll introduce, uh, Tim Sharpie. Tim is the president of Tactical Athlete, now known as Rebound. Tim was a captain with the Wauwautosa Fire Department, so he's experienced firsthand the, the service. So, Tim?
Thank you, thank you, Rick. It's Police Department. No offense to my fire. Gotta make sure I clear that up, so, uh, thank you, and I'll be very respectful of your time, but Rick really did a nice job. Uh, what we did was, we took the sports medicine model of injuries and put it on first responders. And what I mean by that is, we know, in the simplest example, Aaron Rodgers gets injured, they know within hours of that injury on the field, what the course of healing is gonna be. We took that same model and put it on our first responders. So in this area, we've partnered with top-tier surgeons, physical therapists, occupational therapists, work-hardening clinics, and MRI companies and bracing companies. These are all handshake agreements. We only have one funding source. We don't take monies from our physicians, and we certainly don't pay them, for two reasons. One, if they're not doing what we require of them, and that's expediting care for our first responders, and they're not going through our certification, which includes firefighter for a day, police officer for a day, DPW for a day training, so that they know what our first responders are going through every single day. The dynamics of that job, the biometric movements of going up a ladder, getting in and out of a squad car, getting up and down a fire truck, if they don't know that, how can they treat our first responders? So once they agree to expedite care, go through our training, they're in our program. We've got a very extensive network in Milwaukee because we started in Milwaukee in two thousand and ten. We're currently in eight states, we have about a hundred and seventy-five departments, we have fifteen thousand first responders in our system right now, and forty-five thousand family members as well in our system. What I think the beauty part of this program is this, if you get injured, I want you to see a physician, a surgeon, a specialist for your injury, get MRI, and have that MRI read within seventy-two hours of you calling us. Our goal is ease of access, immediate access to top-tier quality care. That's why we're constantly evaluating our providers. We talk about, you know, the benefits of backfill and overtime, we talk about that we've saved anywhere from three to six months in backfill because we get people back to work. We are not shortening the rehab program. I make the argument, because we get you in the door so much sooner, we identify what the injury is so quickly, the treatment is always correct, we can spend more time rehabbing. Because all the cost savings, you know, the, the savings to the village, the taxpayers are all important. They were important to me as the administrative captain for Wauwautosa. But right now, as a president, that's not my priority. My success metrics in a company is this, if one of our first responders gets injured, I want them to come back to the job at a hundred percent, not seventy percent, not sixty percent. I want them at a hundred percent. And knock on wood, to date, everybody who's in our program, we have not had one reoccurring injury for anybody who stayed in our program. We pride ourselves, that's an optional program. We cannot direct care in a state of Wisconsin, even the states where we can, like Florida and Missouri, we keep it an option. There's power in picking up the phone. The concierge piece is, once you have your surgery, somebody is calling you every week. One of our member support advocates call you every week. If Sarah Thomas is your member support advocate as an injured police officer or firefighter, Sarah is your person all the way through. She calls you every work, every week. She makes sure that your physical therapist is doing what you want him to do. You're good with the plan, you know what's next, if you have any questions with work comp. She's also facilitating with the village, so everybody who has a hand in work comp knows what's gonna happen and where this employee is, so nobody gets lost. What we've found is, knowledge is power. And the more we communicate with the employee and the employer also helps get that person back, and what we've found is, it reduces some of the behavioral health issues in really significant injuries. Cause they know when they're coming back and they know what's gonna happen. Our member support advocates follow at the follow-up with the employee, four weeks and eight weeks after they return full duty, just to make sure they're okay. We always talk about the expedited care, but to me, as a president, seeing it from my cops in Tulsa and my firefighters, what it meant to my people when they were injured by getting that VIP concierge, concierge service was huge. And it was the gold standard of what we do. And everything I've explained from a one-eight-hundred number to call up and talk to a licensed athletic trainer who sets your appointments, seeing top-tier surgeons, member support advocates, also works for your immediate family members and off-duty injuries. Two significant differences. One, we don't charge for that, because it's the right thing to do for our people. The second is, we gotta work within your major medical, whatever that major medical is. We gotta make sure that surgeon is in your plan. So we work through all of those issues. We see right now about three times as many family members as we do on-duty injuries, especially in the fall, because we have football and soccer. So we get a lot of kids come through our program. Uh, but it's been wildly successful for family members. One of the questions I always get is this, what do you identi- define, what do you define as immediate family? I don't know, how do you define it? Is it a mother, is it a father, is it a good friend who's like family, then they're in the program? We only charge for sworn officers, sworn firefighters, and infield public works professionals, but everybody in the village who works here has access to the program as do their family. Rick will talk about how LWMMI is gonna support this program, but for us, our goal is to show you what we can do and, and really see you experience it, so that we have a long-term relationship with the Village of Heartland. That's our goal. It's our goal with every municipality that we work with. This team of ours is amazing. They work hard to get it right at every turn. And when they can't, they'll fix it. And we always have problems, we always have obstacles, but this team works hard to make it right. That's my promise to you all. So, I know that is a boatload of information, but I know you've had a very long meeting, but I wanted to give you a really high-level overview of what we do, um, and how we do it, so.
There, there was a contract that you have, now what the league insurance company is doing, to me, this is a no-brainer, because you'll enter into the contract with Tactical Athlete, you'll then pay Tactical Athlete, you'll submit that invoice to the league insurance company, and the league insurance company will reimburse you a hundred percent for, for that contract. Because the league insurance company believes that it's gonna lower the work comp costs by that much, that's why they're investing in that. And, and I know you talked a lot about first responders, but I, I just wanna make sure, yes, it was founded for the first responders, for the police officers and the firefighters, it's, it's for every employee in the village, your department of public works, your library, your park and rec, sewer, water, whatever, whatever departments you have, everybody is eligible for this program and can benefit from it. So questions?
Seventy-six hundred and fifty dollars for everybody in the village?
Is it, I, is that?
Yes, that's the contract price, that is correct.
That's for everybody.
And their families.
And their families.
And is that for the entire con- that's the contract price or per, is that annual?
That's, I have to look at the contract, that's the contract, annual contract.
We reimburse you.
That's the initial term.
And we have to change the date too.
Yeah, I sent over a new contract with a new date starting July first, just cause of where we are.
Now, how does that fit in with our current? We have a program for people too, don't we? That if they're injured or if there's.
That's different, I think you're thinking about the employee assistance program?
Yeah.
That would be for anything, if anybody would need psychological help, finding a day care, the employee assistance program pretty much is a.
Totally different than ours.
Totally different. So, and most other municipalities in LWMMI are going with this, cause the league is reimbursing us, so there is no cost, and I believe they're covering it for three years, if that is correct?
The, the intent of, that the intent is, is that this lasts for ten, fifteen, twenty years, and they'll continue to reimburse you every year.
Correct.
Right. I think the presentation and the information was good for myself, because it was so much, it's like trying to, it's like trying to drink from a, a, a fire hose, uh, but I think that it might not be a bad idea to table it until next meeting for a decision. I don't know if you'll be able to come back or not, uh, both of you, uh, but I know for myself, sometimes, uh, questions come up, and, and it gives a little bit of time, that doesn't mean that's what we have to, I'm just openly saying for myself, I think that it gives some time to call for some questions, and then as some trustees have questions and everybody, uh, you know, gets them answered, uh, it sounds like a, I mean, there's no doubt that the, the things that you had brought up are beneficial. I might, I'll say right on cam- I'm having trouble wrapping myself on how it, how it's affected with the league, but I know based on you saying it, Rick, that that's true. I just, that's, I wanna peruse through a little bit more, but that doesn't mean in any way, shape, or form that I'm against it. I think it's good when it's this much information, especially if you're thinking about getting into a contract with a village to, you know, take some extra time and look through it, and, and, not that we haven't had enough already, but maybe I'm just slower than most.
Ryan, so can you give us your, um, your thoughts on this and how it's working and what you've seen thus far?
We currently haven't been using it, just from other communities that we've talked to, um, like they said, they get you back to work right away. For most of us, uh, odds are, I'm not gonna have an incident, but our public works, our fire, our police, they could. I wouldn't, honestly, I'm not gonna lie, I wouldn't have brought this forward if it wasn't free, you know, it gives us an option to look at it. If it ever is a cost at that point, we as a village could evaluate it. This seems like a no-brainer, every community around us is doing it, so if we don't, we're losing out on that.
That's what I wanted to clarify, so we, we initially pay.
And we get it back.
And we get reimbursed.
Correct. So.
Okay.
It's just an added benefit to us.
It just seems so impossible.
Well, that's, if I can.
I know it's, yeah, absolutely.
We can, we can charge you.
That's, that's, you know, that's, we get that all the time, it seems too good to be true. Uh, what we've done now with those departments that aren't part of, uh, the league in other states, we've built out a return on investment tool. And we take three years of your loss run reports, we look at your orthopedic injuries and say, we would've impacted this, and we put it in a formula so you can see the savings. And to date, we're, our return on investment for our municipalities, whether it's Memphis, who's got eighteen hundred firefighters, or Gig Harbor, that's got twenty, is ten weeks, is the break-even point for those departments that are paying it individually for their firefighters and the police. So, because we had to fight that, it just seems too good to be true. It isn't. This area, because of the providers we work with and who we deal with, from the surgeons for the Brewers and the Bucks, and to have them, we're leveraging those open spots they key for their pro athletes, to have them go, yes, I can see your person at noon today when we call them at eight in the morning, is impressive. But we've been here for ten years. Uh, that's the beauty part of here, the, it's really risk averse, as it were.
I guess, I would say, as a healthcare provider, proactive healthcare is, is crucial. I mean, it's proven time and time again as cost savings, and the same thing, I mean, that's not considered proactive, injury already occurred, but time of injury to time of therapy, surgery, whatever it is, is crucial to turn around time to get somebody back up and running.
Yeah, we're looking at initiative this year to offer our, cause our, we have licensed athletic trainers that answer the phone call. So it's a one-eight-hundred number, it rings our cell phones for our athletic trainers across the country, and now we're looking to offer this twenty-four seven, because our public works, our fire and our police all work twenty-four seven, so when they call, we want a body answering the phone, it's not a call service. They're gonna talk to them and figure out who's the best specialist that they can get them to. So that's, again, part of that, we wanna step our game up and provide a better level of service.
Are you finding that this is getting used as a retention tool for municipalities as well as a recruitment tool as well, as they look to hire?
Yeah, it's a great question. So what's happening in the city of Memphis is that's exactly it. Because they can go at them and say, listen, you have your own medical staff, we treat you like you had when you were in college and played athletics, or in the south when you played high school football. This is what you have, and it really resonates well with people, so yes.
Any other questions?
You don't have to do what I said.
No, I know, I'm gonna make a motion, unless somebody has other questions.
I just, so you're looking for us to sign the first initial contract till twenty-twenty-three? So three years will be the first one? And you're saying three years, your, your company will cover it?
Correct.
Okay.
The league is our company.
The league of municipalities.
The league is your company, correct, the league insurance company.
Yes.
Rick has been the broker, I've worked with Rick in a couple different communities, he's, he's our, he's our broker for the league, he, he reps the league, the league is our.
Municipal, it's, it's owned, owned and operated by the municipalities for the municipalities for specific issues relative to municipalities. And so Rick, I think, is in a unique position, uh, obviously a local guy, done a lot of business here, you know, is kind of, uh, two fronts here, he's, he's representing us as the league, but he's also trying to bring a value add, um, as well to try to help us out, so he's kind of playing both, you know, given both aspects.
I think it's important to say, Luis Rivera, who's a CDO.
He's a physical therapist by trade. He worked in Major League Baseball, and he just stumbled on this idea, he didn't get into this business, he just started working with Milwaukee Fire on a different project and realized this. But we've always said that if a community doesn't see the value add, and they, they don't want it anymore, then we'll, we'll terminate the contract. There's no hidden language that you're owed, it's just not how we work. We wanna be as transparent as we can, and we want this to be mutually agreeable to everybody. Our reputation, because we don't market ourselves, is all word of mouth. And everybody knows in this field, if you do it wrong, that's gonna spread like wildfire, right? We're gonna work every day to do it the right way, and that's how we get in front of you folks, quite frankly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Tip, you, you reviewed the contract and everything?
It looks good.
Okay.
As again, it's, uh, the boilerplate from the league, I think we're, I, I don't see the league.
This one, this one from Rick, and, do we need to, does it need to go through legal or?
No.
Typically, when it's something like this, it goes through Rick. Rick, you've reviewed it?
Yeah, I've looked at the contract, and, and our CEO, when I say the CEO, the CEO of the league insurance company has looked at the contract.
Okay.
And it's the same contract that's being presented to all of our municipalities that are part of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities program.
Okay. Well, I feel comfortable, I'll make a motion to approve entering an agreement, uh, for the services with Tactical Athlete Health and Performance Institute.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, to move into the agreement with Tactical Athlete Health and Performance Institute. Discussion.
I'm, I'm sorry, I would just find that if we could find a way to use this as a retention and recruitment tool as we continue to, um, expand here in the Village of Heartland, when we're looking for either fire or administration, you know, police and whatnot, include that in our offerings, does it benefit to them? That's it, thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
So you guys are all eligible right now too, once you sign it?
We are. Yeah, I know, my, my kid, when he broke his arm.
You're a phenomenal speaker, by the way. I hope you know that.
I would.
Well done.
I'm more concerned with the, the employees.
Thank you.
The police and fire and DPW. Okay, now we have, uh, the last item, I can tell you right now, the last item on the agenda, there's nothing for that yet, uh, but the next item we have is discussion and consideration related in, related to opening village facilities. I do ask that we keep it as, as, uh, I'm talking to the board, not to you. That, the board, when we do discuss, that we keep it somewhat brief, unless it's very, very important, just due to the hour, once we get past an hour and a half, I try to. But Kelly, you take as much time as you want, I'm just saying when we're discussing. How comes the budget book?
Kelly, the floor is yours.
The floor is yours, Kelly.
In my memo, you guys saw that, um, we've had some feedback from the community about opening up the splash pad. I did talk to my summer camp coordinator, and we both felt it would be fine if the board does decide to open the splash pad, to open during camp hours, our camp hours are eight to five-thirty, as long as we can use the two shelters, um, that are between the tennis courts and the splash pad. I wrote in there one and two, but it's actually three and, three and two. One is the older one, um, closest to the road, um, it's got a grassy area, we felt that by having the two shelters by each other, we could keep the kids close together, we can keep an eye on them, um, it's kind of our little huddle, you know? And it would also give the community members, the public, a space to go from the opposite side of us, so we kinda keep our distance from the kids. And then they would have the grassy area that's from the shelter to the road, and then down around, we have quite a lot of grassy area that people can use. We do have, um, shelter reserve signs during the hours and dates of camp that we would put up. We could even put them up this week, just so people start kinda getting that mentality of, okay, this is gonna be used in a few days next week for a few hours, just for the kids. And we've hit, talked to the staff, we're just hoping that you guys will still allow us to use those shelters, and we do plan on using Shelter Four as well, behind the bandshell, but we'd like to keep the kids as close as possible together.
When you're running that eight to five-thirty, uh, program, how old are those kids?
Six to twelve.
Six to twelve? They don't need naps, like older people?
No, the first week though, we get a lot of feedback, the kids get really tired. And then they kinda get used to it, and then they get tired again in August, everybody starts getting tired, cause they're so used to it. But we do have, we do schedule downtime for them, um, even like on Fridays, uh, they might come into Community Center, watch a movie or something, just to kinda, another week, and they start getting tired, they're not used to all that, uh, fresh air and go, 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 so.
So the gist is, if, if the village board so desires, we can open the splash pad tomorrow, normal hours for the splash pad, that we've done in years past.
That's a great idea.
Well, you know where I'm at on it.
I'll make a motion to open the splash pad tomorrow.
I'll second that.
Do you wanna add to the motion?
request, which is actually what the request is in front of us. Yes. The actual request in front of us is for her to utilize the shelters.
Okay.
And because I would have discussion on that.
Okay.
So.
That the village use the village shelters?
Yeah.
No, but I mean, but then we split it up?
Yeah.
Okay. So, your motion was for opening the splash pad. It was seconded. It's been moved and seconded to open the splash pad. Any discussion?
My only thought of opening, I'm fine with the opening. I think it should be open, as I've talked to DPW a little, of removing some of the picnic tables. And that's just to be a little proactive of that we took the initiative to have some separation, because right now, they're all set up for the village to use, and the one that is not being used by our rec department should, I think, should have some of the picnic tables removed. There's a lot of grass area where they can bring blankets and spread them out there and do that. I just think to show that we are making sure that our people are being safe, that we're taking away some of the tables to cause the separation that's recommended by the CDC, and that we should make sure that we post around there like we have in the park, that it is used at your own risk, that it is not being cleaned, and that it should be used at your own risk.
Okay. With that, I'd be a little, only Waukesha County's at 100, and they can fit 100 in that pavilion, but Donna has every right to, or trustee Doro has every right to say that. So, if people want to incorporate that, they could. They're really opening things up. I believe in the next two weeks, we're going to be at 150, but that's, it could be incorporated in the motion, though. You know, to get, or.
The second motion.
Or we could leave it up to Tim to tell DPW, however you guys want to work it. But it's something to be concerned about because someone is bringing it up, and then maybe it'll make people feel a little more safe that normally wouldn't come, but will come down.
And if it changes, I think, yeah, we could bring some back, certainly. It's not like we're burning the picnic tables.
And the at-your-own-risk is absolutely true.
Yes.
I mean, that is across the board for everything.
So, I would like that added in.
Okay. Now, we're, but we're talking, one thing I do got to clarify, and maybe we'll have to re-edit, well, you guys already know that, just because we're just talking about the opening of the splash pad, so, but we can bring that same thing up for the pavilion too, if that's, I don't know if that's where Rob's going to bring it up. So, all in favor on opening the splash pad? Aye. All opposed? Okay. You've got your vote on the splash pad, got your vote on the splash pad, but we have a second part now?
Right. So, Kelly's request is about, you know, continuing to utilize those shelters.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing I was going to say in that, so, if, I mean, I would make a motion for Kelly to continue to use those shelters, even though that the splash pad is still open at that time. So, I don't know if we need a second.
Gotcha. And to add to that, I think we'll get some heat. People usually rent those out all the time. I think that you have said, and it's just, we got to just, it's the way it is, and when people call in, the nice thing is, and we're not lying, but I'm guessing that when they call in, whether it's DeeDee or yourself, is saying it's reserved at that time. And it is.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, we're going through hard times.
Yeah, DeeDee already knows, DeeDee already has it on her calendar not to reserve those shelters during camp hours.
Yep.
Right, which is why I've seen it separate. However, I would say in the communication, though, we need to be forward with our communication about that to the public. Instead of it being the public's reaching out to us, and then they're told last minute, no, you can't rent it. I think it's who of us at the village to go forth and saying the splash pad is open. However, please note that the village is running a day camp, and those shelters will be used at that time. So, the more communication we can get out to the public, I think, the better at this point, considering there's been really none, and so now, we're turning things on and we're opening up. So, I'd rather us be in front of it to help someone like DeeDee, who could be potentially feeling a lot of calls.
Right. Well, I was just, the only reason that I was thinking of it, like, let's say I call for the splash pad right now, if I called in to DeeDee, she'd say, no, you can't use it, but it's reserved. I think that, so, you're saying you want Kelly to actually make a list of any days she's using because she wouldn't? I'm just wanting.
I just want the public to know.
Kinty and I will work on it. We'll put it on Facebook. We'll put it on our website stating shelters, two and three are not available for the public between these dates and these times, Monday through Friday. Exactly what you guys have. We'll take care of it.
And that's a good point, Rob. Maybe we could put a post on the web, they could put a post on the website just so people know, hey, you know.
We'll put in constant contact this Friday and blast it out.
That's what I was, all I was asking. We got it. Two separate things was to that. Yep.
Yep.
So.
Do we, I'm going to need a motion. Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was going to second. She made a motion, but nobody seconded, so I was going to second it.
It's been moved and seconded, it's been moved and seconded to approve our rector requesting to use the pavilions, as she stated, that she wanted to use those for the summer camp, since at this point in time, we still are kind of kicked out of the schools. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. We're actually number 14. And number 14 is going to, which is a consideration of board commission and committee appointments as presented by village president. There is none to make right now. So, we have announcements, and I turn it over to whichever trustees have announcements.
I have just one announcement to make, and this was to our police officers. Officer Miller, there was a missing woman in the village, and it was a lot of hours by our police and fire department in very hot, hot weather. She was found, and I was pretty happy when I saw Officer Miller pull up and the compassion and the, that he just was so, after spending hours in that heat, just so kind, and the empathy that he showed towards this woman, I just have, I was so proud of how it was handled and how happy this girl who was, woman who was lost, how happy she was. Suddenly, she just thought her best friend had shown up, and I thought, and she wasn't like that because I had been with her, so I was pretty impressed on how it was handled. So, thank you to Officer Miller.
I would like to go next because I don't want to end this meeting on bad news, and I see the chief has good news to report. So, I'll give my bad news first. Unfortunately, the Lake Country Lutheran Development, which is, which was half single-family homes with Newman Development and half multifamily, the multifamily piece has dropped from the development. We're working on trying to find out exactly why and what we could have done different to keep that part of the mix, and we'll be working and putting out some information on that. But as of now, they've formally submitted a letter that they are dropping from that part of the project. Single family is still moving forward, so all the discussion, Willow, things happening there still need to happen, and it is still progressing, and we'll be on Monday night's Plan Commission agenda, but officially, the multifamily is dropped, so.
Okay. Before you go, chief, I'm just, I'm going to try to get through the trustees and myself, and then we'll turn it over to you guys and have you, you guys always finish it off, and it's always happy when you guys finish it off. Any other announcements? I just have a couple. I do want to make sure that people are aware. We did have a very peaceful, Heartland had a very peaceful protest this past week. It appeared very peaceful, other than it being lined up in front of the police department. They wanted to send a message to the police department. I just want to make sure everybody in Heartland knows, even if you, whether you agree or disagree, they have the right to peacefully protest. They have the right to have the opinion, whatever opinions that anybody wants to have. This goes for any peaceful protest. I just want to make sure that people are aware that just because there's difference of opinions, it doesn't mean that it opens up the door, because most of the people around you might believe one way, that you go and have to attack somebody else, even though you don't agree with how they're protesting or anything like that. So, as that goes on, we're in a very odd, kind of crazy time in the country. Their people are upset for certain reasons. People want change. All I can do is I can say that everybody has the right to peacefully protest, but if you had to ask me anything that needed to change with our police department, I wouldn't change a thing, and I stand behind them 100% and thank them for their service and being a pinnacle and a beacon of light to anybody else that comes to Heartland to see how it's supposed to be done. So, to you guys, thank you.
Well done, by the way, with that.
Thank you, chief.
Very agree. High class.
Any other trustees? Let's turn it over to you guys. Yeah, chiefs and chiefs and directors and.
So, just a couple of things. We got some good news from our billing company this week, and I'll be bringing it to the board probably next, next meeting. We are one of the top collectors of our ambulance fees from Medicare, Medicaid, and all that. Got a really nice letter from the company telling us that, and like I said, I'll present that next, next meeting. We have some things going on. Tonight, they, we have a house on Lakewood Drive, which is in Town of Merton, that we will be burning down on the 20th. So, I'd like to invite anybody that wants to come out and watch us work and work with us. Maybe get in and sit around and watch some fire burn. Come on out on the 20th. It'll start at 7:00 in the morning. We should be done by noon or hopefully 1:00 at the latest. Tonight, they were out at the house practicing, just our group. We're doing, it's called Vent Enter, Vent, Enter, Isolate, and Search. So, if we know we have a person down, they go in, open the window, get in the window, do a quick search, close the door so that it isolates that room so the fire can't get in real fast, and then we do our rescue if we have, if we find a person in there. So, that's what they were practicing tonight. Next Monday night, we're working with Lake Country Fire, Town of Dell Field Fire, and Wales Genesee Fire, and we are doing RIT operations, which is pretty much saving our own. So, we'll get together with them and that, and then on the 20th, when we do the burn down, we will have probably four or five, maybe even six departments there helping us, so. So, come on out and play.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick updates. We had a couple cases move either from isolation or confirmed cases of COVID over the weekend, but we remained the same at five active cases, so we stay stable at that level.